It now being four minutes after six o'clock. That would seem like a good time to begin. So, let me call this meeting to order. And we'll do that by welcoming everyone to the September meeting of the Saginaw City Planning Commission. If you are here to present a case, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your presentation. We may ask questions for clarity or for more information. A simple majority vote of the members present will decide on your request. If you are here to speak in the public comment phase of the meeting, please also come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and direct your comments to the commission. We have no time limit, but brevity is appreciated. Let's begin with the roll call, please.
Thomas Brayley. Jim Doan.
Here.
Clint Bryant. Robert Hanley.
Here.
Yolanda Jones.
Here.
Floyd Clock.
Here.
Fred Zwerkow. Jack Nash.
Present.
Jim Nightingale.
Present.
Sir Chairman, you have a call.
Very good. We have on the agenda approval of the minutes from our July meeting. So, do we have any changes, additions, corrections to those minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
Moved and supported, ready for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. We have the agenda in front of us for tonight. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, we'll proceed to our first item of business, which is our public hearing on the small cell ordinance adoption.
So, this was an ordinance that has been written by the city attorney, Amy Luss. I asked her to come, just in case you guys have any questions that I'm not able to answer, because I am not the expert on this matter. Essentially, Governor Snyder signed the Small Wireless Communications Equipment Act, which required cities to allow small cell devices, I guess would be, small cell facilities. So, communities are required to allow these small cell facilities to be attached to any of our poles. We do have to implement an ordinance to be able to have some limitations on what are allowed, but, so that's what we did. Otherwise, we really would just basically have to say yes to anything that comes in. These small cell devices can look different, they can vary in sizes. Essentially, they're attached to our poles, and they allow for businesses to be able to use them for wireless, right?
It's all about building a wireless infrastructure and trying to take...
Is it only public utility poles that they get to attach to, or can they use, do it to others as well?
They can use others. We are only in charge of the public utilities.
Right, I understand that, but I was curious if they can go beyond what you have.
Yep, they could contact consumers, or, there's, AT&amp;T has a couple around here. There's a couple different people that they could use their poles if they would like that location better than one that the city has. Likely, a lot of these will not have to come before the planning commission, because it will just be run through the engineering department. The only way that it would come before the planning commission is if it would be attached to a private building.
I was hoping we might have a picture that would give us an idea of the shape and size of these things.
So, they vary quite a bit. So, it could be just a little box on the, on the poles, and it could be, some of them stick out and have...
Like antennas?
Yeah, that kind of looks like antennas.
Yeah.
That will stick out. There's a lot of different kinds.
You talk about up to six cubic feet, so two by two by two is the box size or the frame size that they're allowed, but they can have external items as well, apparently. Is that right?
Yeah, if you'd like for me to approach, I pulled one up on my iPad.
So, they can vary significantly. Sometimes, they just have the appearance of boxes that are mounted onto the poles.
Yeah.
It's like a bat house.
A little bigger.
A little bit bigger, but, yeah. Other times...
Is that a bigger one or a smaller one there?
That, that's generally about the size.
Oh, okay.
They just, they vary more in appearance sometimes. Sometimes, they can have this candelabra-type appearance to them, but...
You can see those all over the place already.
Yeah, right, so, they can vary quite a bit in...
Do we have any idea at all of how many of these might eventually be in the city? Or is that too soon to ask?
I, I wouldn't know a way to estimate that. It's really up to the telecom industry.
Almost every one in every pole, if they wanted, probably.
Yeah.
There's no limit, there's no limit in the statute that I'm aware of.
Correct. Correct. Some, some are to try to minimize the use of small cell facilities, some are utilizing what they call micro facilities, which are really smaller boxes that you might see strung across the wire themselves, but, that's...
There is a range of effectiveness here, right? I mean, how far they are effective or not?
I, I can't speak to how...
I believe the reason is they're trying to, they're trying to get rid of the big poles, and so they can get into every good-looking cranny in everybody's house.
Correct.
Really, that's what it's, that's what it's all about.
It's, it's, it's the race to, the race to 5G and...
Well, I saw that was an issue, too.
They have access.
That certainly is coming. Any other questions?
Is there anything required of us on this? I mean, we can't deny it, I mean...
Right. Under, under the acts that were implemented, and, you guys are just seeing the zoning code amendment, because that's all that would come before the planning commission. If they meet certain definitions, these small cell facilities are permitted uses, and so they wouldn't otherwise come before you as a board. But there are certain things that the city council can do in the city as a whole, and we can, you know, set up a permitting process and work to try to have some limited regulation in that regard. But this is, you know, we're, we're acting under state law. Both of the ordinances that were drafted, the zoning code amendments before you, and the licensing ordinance that will go before city council, are essentially mirrors of what the state law allows for us to do. There, there was a concerted effort amongst municipalities to try to put together template model ordinances, so there was some consistency across the board and across the state as to what everybody's ordinances looked like in trying to regulate these with both the state law coming down and the FCC having much more activity in the last couple of years than it ever has before. So, trying to keep everybody consistent and in compliance with those regulations.
What about the design and aesthetics? Is that mandated by the state or by the city, or is this going to be whatever they put out?
We have limited scope of review in that regard. We have the ability, for example, to suggest an alternative location if, when they apply for a permit, we don't like the location they want to put it up in, but that's really, suggesting is really all that we can do. If, if they're determined to put it up in the location that they initially apply for, we can't really say no if they meet all the other requirements.
And their locations would be driven by technology, I'm assuming, where they can get the biggest, you know, bang for their dollar, where they can take and...
Where the infrastructure is needed and where there's existing poles.
Where they can service the most clients, customers.
Right.
Are there any thoughts yet from city council about this, or none?
No, I mean, it's...
None really to be...
Yeah, we, we know we can't do much about it except adopt the ordinance with...
Correct.
Recommendations that you have, whatever tweaking, you know, you've got in here, it's not much. So, I think it's just could basically be a pass-through for all purposes.
It really is.
What is our responsibility? And I'm thinking of what Commissioner Nash just asked about. I see in the ordinance, "Planning commission may impose reasonable requirements regarding the appearance of facilities."
Yeah.
"Planning commission may impose spacing setback and fall zone requirements." So, we do have some control.
But that's only if it does, if it falls outside the definition of what would be a permitted use.
It's a special land.
Correct. So, if it's, if it's the installation of a new structure on an existing pole, or if it's a modification of existing equipment, that's not going to come before the planning commission, so you're never going to get that far. If it falls out of the scope of that permitted use, though, you do still have some abilities that would have to come before you as any special land use approval would.
Do we have any other thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused, I guess. We have, on the, on the second page of the ordinance, at the top, wireless communication equipment. It says that it's a permitted use allowed in all zoning districts, and it, wireless communication equipment is not subject to zoning review and approval if all of the following requirements are met. There's four of them listed.
Correct.
But then it further says that if the co-location meets the requirements of one and two, but not three and four, then it's subject to special land reviews review. Correct. Okay? So, now we're going into these other things on the, on the last page, on the second to the last page, which would include our ability, for example, to impose spacing setback and fo... What's the fall zone requirement?
I, I'm not certain. The fall zone?
Yeah.
Of the pole?
I... Which section are you on? I, this is, this is section, it's on the second to last page, under special land use standards, down near the bottom, item subsection D, subsection 3D. Well, fall zone, I'm sure, is from the pole.
Certainly.
Yeah, we have those requirements around buildings and such.
Yeah, it currently, within your zoning ordinance, you would have setback and other requirements established. And I believe you currently, as part of that zoning code, it does address, you know, the larger, large-scale utility and telecommunications poles and antennas.
I have another question, and it's probably academic. What is a equipment compound? There's reference, you have, there's definitions in the, in the ordinance in communication equipment, communication support structure, but later on in the ordinance, the compound is used. And I don't know what that is. Do you have any idea where that...
Yeah, in which section would that be?
Uh, I got it. It's someplace. Um, oh, I'm sorry, I can't... Oh, yeah, on, under wireless communication equipment, 153, it's those four things that I, four standards that I mentioned before. And item four, "The proposed co-location complies with the terms and conditions of any previous final approval of the wireless communication support structure or equipment compound." But that's, that's a term that's not defined in the definitions.
It, it means the totality, total square footage of all of the equipment together. So, it, it's used a little bit more clearly in that section A, subsection 3C. "The proposed co-location will not do any of the following. Increase the area of the existing equipment compound to greater than 2,500 square feet." So, I think it's just a reference to the cumulative footprint of the equipment.
A good, a good idea of comparison to be, if you have on a pole, you know, the, the round, what do they call them, the, on electric poles, they have the...
Transformers.
Transformers, but they also have, out in the field, you'll see large banks of transformers and things. So, I think that's the same analogy here. You have locations or compounds where there's a lot of different equipment, and then you have your poles with these small boxes on them. I think that's what they're referring to here.
Well, okay, let me ask then. On the first page, under definitions, small wireless, small cell wireless facility, subsection II, "All other wireless equipment associated with the facility is cumulative not more than 25 cubic feet in volume, but the following types of associated ancillary equipment are not included in the calculation of equipment volume: electric meters, concealment elements," I assume it's fencing, "telecommunication demarcation boxes, grounding equipment, power transfer switches, cutoff switches, and vertical cable runs for the connection of power and other services." Am I to assume that those things are all included in what we call the compound, or are they outside the compound?
I believe they'd be included in the, in the definition of equipment compound, yes.
Does the planning commission have the ability to approve a compound that is in excess of 2,500 square feet? Because the...
I, it would be, I believe it would fall into, under the category of requiring special land use approval. I have not reviewed the rest of your zoning ordinance to see if it would violate the other, any provision of the zoning code otherwise that would prevent, prohibit you from doing that, but I believe, because if the compound of equipment was greater than 2,500 square feet, it's not going to meet that criteria set forth under wireless communication equipment. It's going to kick it from a permitted use into a, a special land use approval.
And 2,500 square feet seems like a big limit. I, I can't imagine these things being 25 by 100 feet. Seems like it would always be much smaller.
They do, they probably... 16 yards by 16 yards or something. They must have all the backup equipment that they can locate in one location, is what I'm suspecting we're talking about here. You know, all your support equipment, all the other stuff. If electrical companies can do it, I wouldn't be surprised if this happens here, too.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if someday somebody comes here before us.
Well, that's what I think Amy is right...
What power do we have?
I think Amy is right. That would come, it can't be, under this, it can't exceed 2,500. And if they want to, they'd have to get approval.
Correct.
I think that's, that's what it boils down to.
So, we could do that, okay?
It sounds like it.
I don't know.
Problem is, isn't that, had any court cases interpreted any of this either yet, have we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and they didn't consider much of what the cities wanted. They pretty well ignored it.
Well, and even with the state bringing down the laws that went into place, we still would have had to do something, because FCC released an order, kind of setting up the same structure to some extent, so...
But right now, there's no, nothing required of us, other than being aware of this, I take it.
This would be an amendment to the zoning code, so, to amend, to amend the zoning code, there's a public hearing held by the planning commission, and then the planning commission approves to pass through to the council.
Guess you just need a motion to approve to pass on to council?
Well, I need you to, because we are in a public hearing, I need you to ask twice more for any comments, and then close the public hearing, and then we'll vote.
Then we can do a motion.
Do we have anyone here for a public comment on this issue? And once again, do we have anyone here for a public comment?
I have a question, I guess. I wasn't planning on it, but I'm Jane Fitzpatrick, 123 Hine Avenue, resident of the city, and I'm also on the Historic District Commission. And the question that comes to mind is, for approval of a placement of this on a building within a local historic district, would that then come before the local historic district for approval?
If it meets the definitions under the state law, which are duplicated within the ordinance, and it falls under the category of permitted use, and it's not something that falls into the category of a special land use, I do not believe it goes to the Historic District Commission.
I, I just want a clarification, because our purview is on the exterior alterations of all buildings, all structures within a local historic district.
I, I understand, but I believe the state law preempted.
It preempted state law?
Effectively, yes. It does speak to, the, that particular language is not within the zoning code, I don't believe, but there is, let me find it. There are limitations set up in the state law that speaks to historic districts, as well as a few other districts, like residentially zoned.
Public Act 169 is what I'm referring to.
I know you're referring to the Historic District Act. However, I'm talking about the Small Cell Wireless Facility Deployment Act that speaks to...
Okay.
...what can and cannot be done within historic districts. So, in a way, the state law limited the scope of review by local historic district commissions. And within that state law, they place limitations, but they do allow for cities to enforce certain design and concealment measures, which apply to the co-location of small cell wireless facilities in historic districts, downtown districts, which would include our RMU, and residentially zoned districts. And it sets forth four different criteria in that regard, from, the facilities can, shall be located no closer than 10 feet from any driveway, shall be located in line with a side lot line, and not in front of a residence. Shall be located no closer than 18 inches from an existing sidewalk face or face of curb, or 18 inches from a proposed future sidewalk or face of curb location. And it, they cannot exceed an aggregate width of four feet, and shall be secured a minimum of 10 feet from the ground, or 18 feet from where a permit may overhang the back of curb line. That's essentially...
Thank you.
Yeah.
What is that?
The limitations they've put on.
What is the public act number for that?
The public act number for that is Public Act 365 of 2018.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And Jane, I can get you the specific section after we have to...
Do we have anyone else for public comment on this issue? Very good. So, I would entertain a motion to...
Close the public hearing, so moved?
Support.
Moved and supported, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, we will then forward this to city council without comment, I guess?
We also need a vote to approve it.
Oh, okay.
On top of the closing.
I would entertain a motion to approve...
Approve referral to the, to the council?
Yep.
Support.
Yes, support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is development updates. We always like to hear development updates.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
I'm going to pass this around for you. So, there are a couple things coming through right now. St. Mary's Hospital is doing a project. It did not have to come before the planning commission, because it is primarily an infrastructure project, but there is a little bit of an expansion, but it falls under that 15% of the building's square footage. They did not have to come. They are essentially reworking the circulation of the property, so for ambulances, vehicles, and foot traffic. So, they're going to be moving, right now, they have a vacated street right in front of the building. They're going to be pulling up the water line that is currently down there, and a little, I believe, a little bit of a sewer line, maybe they're moving and pushing it back closer towards Washington. And then they are reworking the, the parking lots and things, sidewalks right there. And then for the emergency room, they're pushing out just a small expansion that will have a bay, over-covered and heated sidewalk for the ambulances. So, it'll be a lot nicer, improve their circulation quite a bit. 2715 State Street was that Michigan International Charter School that we approved a couple of months ago. They had a couple conditions, if you remember, that they had to have an easement to allow ingress and egress of the property. They were able to secure that from the Saginaw County Community Health Authority. They also had to have a parking agreement, so that they would have enough parking spaces. They needed 11, and their property only had two. The Saginaw County Community Health Authority thought that that was too many for them to be able to give up, so they actually went next door to a mechanic shop, and now have an agreement for nine of the spaces there. That is a temporary agreement, it's for five years. After that, it will continue just one year at a time. Floyd wanted to talk about this a little bit. I don't know if we want to put something in place that says there has to be a lifelong agreement if this type of situation did come up again, because there is no guarantee besides going out there in five years and asking, are you renewing your parking agreement, that we will know if they really do.
And, and there's two parts. One, the ordinance actually required that they get it from the Second County Community Mental Health, and they can't, because they refused. So, we'd actually have to change that to allow the change that they did have, you know, to another, another owner of property, where, because the prior motion was, was for a particular location. The other thing would have to be the concern of, do we, do we create a situation where in five years it's grandfathered in automatically, and now we've lost control, have a building that has only ability to have two sites, two parking sites, even though it should have 11? That's, that's the issue. If there's some way we can tie it down, so that they, it comes back and it's not grandfathered in, I don't have a problem, because we can then make sure in the future, or do what we have to do, but at this moment, that's not where we are.
What would answer that concern?
Well, it gets back to, and Amy, you may have to think about this. If we were to give permission now to this school to have, to allow the agreement to give them the nine temporary spaces, to, if and when it expired and wasn't renewed, that they would have to come back to us and establish having additional parking someplace else. If we could make sure that we have that authority in three, five, or six, seven years it would be, then I don't have a real problem. But if that creates a grandfathered situation, and in those parking spaces go away, for whatever reason, where does that leave us with regard to regulation of this particular site, have an inadequate, substantially inadequate parking for a future purchaser? If the school fails, for example, in three or five, not years from now, they want to put in two, you know, a apartment on the first floor or the second floor, and place down on the first floor that has 20 people working there, where are they going to get their parking?
I think that ultimately, that lot, if they're not going to have an agreement, they're going to have to buy some lot nearby to have more parking, because that building takes up essentially the entire property.
It does.
So, there's really no place for them to even put in more parking spaces.
But that, that's what they'd have to figure out.
Right.
I mean, and the question is, are we left with, if we agree to what they've, they're asking now, the arrangement they're asking now, does that prevent us from requiring them to obtain more in the future if they lose what they have now?
So, we need to answer that question first.
I think we have to.
Before we do anything else.
I would say no, because we only approved it contingent on them having those parking spaces secured.
So, what do you do? Temporary approval now for five years, or six years? I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Do you understand what I'm, what I'm asking, Amy, about the-
I'm not familiar at all with the background of this situation, so I, I, I wouldn't be-
Well, the question is, does giving permission to someone to have a temporary situation create an automatic grandfathering down the road?
And without researching that, I, I can't provide an answer at this time.
That's the issue to me.
Which seems unlikely, but-
It does, but, well, no, it seems like it could, because if we approve occupancy now, is that a permanent occupancy, is, you know, or is it not? And I, I don't know how it couldn't be.
Well, it is, I guess, with 20 parking spaces. However, they-
Well, that's, that's the, maybe we need to, you have to look at that.
Because that was a condition, I don't see how it would grandfather them in, because that was a condition. So, they're only allowed their condition to having 11 parking spaces. So, I would say after five years, we could go back and check, and if they don't still have 11 parking spaces available, we could say, you have to come back and get those 11 parking spaces.
Now, I, as long as-
And then if a new use comes in there, if they don't have that same agreement, they would still have to come and apply for a business license. And I'm not sure if we could even flag that in the system, that it would pop up that they don't have it.
Well, see, that's the worry. I mean, 20 years from now, they still don't have the parking, and we haven't done nothing in the meantime, and-
No, because you won't be able, you can't flag that.
Right. You can't, so I don't.
So, how do we deal with it?
But the, the other thing would be to have a vacant building. I mean-
Well, that's the risk, I understand. So, that's something, that's why we're here, I guess.
Should we ask them to come back before the commission to, at the minimum, discuss this?
Sure.
It sounds like?
Sure.
And maybe Amy, in the meantime, you could take a look at it.
Exactly.
Yeah, and, and just, just for this board's reference, the, the procedurally, the city manager has requested, if there's a legal request that comes from any of the boards or commissions of the city, that it go through the city manager and then flows through me. So, that, that request would be submitted to Mr. Morales first.
Do you, Cassie, feel you've got enough information to present it for us? Present to the manager, the request?
Oh, yes. Yeah, that's no problem.
Well, then, we probably should table it, maybe?
Well, I don't, well, this was just an update, right?
Yeah, this is just an update, so-
It's true, too.
This is none-
We'll just bring it back in as another update.
Yeah, okay. I mean, we do have, we, it is, the approval was subject-
To.
To, and they still haven't got anything permanent, so-
In reality, that's, they didn't meet, they didn't really meet the requirements.
Yeah. So, any other cause about that? I have a couple more updates.
So, we agreed, we will ask them to come back, and in the meantime, we'll research-
Yep.
Everything we need to research. Good.
Okay. Hoyt Library is doing a project, it's just with their stairs and sidewalks, they're putting in a melt system. Yeah, so that will be really nice around Hoyt Library with all of their other project updates with the building, restoring it. The Charles Lee Mansion, a lot of you are probably familiar with that, the De Gezero House. They've been doing really great work. Alex De Perry is the one who bought it. Alex Mixter has been in charge of a lot of the volunteer groups. They actually sent out an email, I don't know if any of you are on his email chain, but, so they have done most of the work for the, I mean, I don't know about most, but they've done a lot of the work. Right now, they are going to be going for a community, or public places, commun, public spaces, community places grant through the Michigan Economic Development Council. It's a fundraising, and then, community fundraising, and then matching grant. So, they're going to be fundraising over the next two months, starting October 1, for $25,000. If they get that $25,000, then MEDC will give them additional $25,000. And they're hoping with this $50,000, they'll be able to finish off the renovations and open it up. The things that, I haven't gotten a spreadsheet of how much the cost is or anything, but I asked Alex what this $50,000 would be paying for. Said they need to still create a parking lot for the building, build ramps for ADA accessibility, electrical finishing, install a permanent furnace with duct work, and repair a priceless piece of stained glass. So, they actually are having a meeting tomorrow afternoon with a group. Whoever's interested is welcome to come. It's at 3:30 at Pizzanz, and we're going to brainstorm some ideas to hopefully be able to raise some money to finish off that project. Inside, he's hoping to have, he's already got, I believe, his own Hound Labs videography is going to be there. They're going to have it be a community gathering space, a bookstore, coffee house, and then some pop-up space for different types of retail activities as well. Then lastly, next month, we will be meeting again, because I met today with this lady over here, who is looking to open a women's shelter at the St. John's Lutheran Church. She's working on buying that building, and then will run the women's shelter out of there. Right now, it's currently split down the middle, it's on B2 and R1, which this does fit in with the R1, but it is a new use, obviously, so she'll be coming before Planning Commission. And that's all I have for you.
Very good. We are now in the public comment section of the agenda. Do we have anyone here to speak in the pub comment section?
Master plan?
Master plan.
Master plan.
Cool. That's right, master plan.
Oh, the master plan. We have, sorry. We have met since our last meeting, we're still, we have put together the online database, has now been out with all of the existing plans, most current ones, and we will be having our focus group meeting soon. So, what we wanted to do was have some focus group meetings, and then also send out a survey, so we get a feel of what the community and different community leaders are feeling, are the prime objectives.
Everybody move around.
Ah, stand up, Jane, maybe.
There we go. There we go.
So, we can see what the general public and community leaders think are the prime issues for the city, and then we're going to hone in closer to the Planning Commission and other of those who are the public leaders, and find out the direction. We are then looking after that to hire in the consultant to manage the rest of the master plan update. So, we're doing good.
Will those meetings start in October, you think, or later?
Yes. Yep. I think we're going to start them in October. We're hoping to have multiple in one day. We're only looking at having three or four from our list that we made. It was educational leaders. Do you remember what they are, Linda? This meeting was like three weeks ago.
Stakeholders in the community, for a large part.
Yeah.
Businesses.
Neighborhood associations was one of them, going to, something like that. So, yeah, that should be in October.
And just to let you know, one of the delays in this is that we're looking at hiring the urban planner, and we have applications. We're just working through the hiring process now, so.
Yeah, that's another good update to tell you. We got some really good applications. We got 11. Five of them seem like very viable candidates for the urban planning position.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, we were pretty impressed. So, as soon as John Stempel had a death in the family last week, so that pushed it a little bit, but we should be getting interviews really, really soon. Definitely before the next month meeting, I would think, so. So, now that's all I have for you.
Okay. I knew that. Well, again, public comment, anyone for public comment? No public comment. Well, then, if there is nothing else, come before us. The meeting is adjourned.